Call the city council meeting to order. Court, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Egwangeli.
Here.
Fining.
Here.
Jermaine.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. Would I ask that all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
You and I are working together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other, and your compassion to promote peace and welfare of the residents of this city.
Pledge of Allegiance, stood by law in the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item would be any amendments to the agenda.
There's an item that we want to pull from the consent agenda to be placed under council action.
Yes, Your Honor, if I ask council to place item 2233, the wastewater treatment plant, the sledge hauling disposal amendment, under council action.
Other comments on those items? There's a note, item under council action under 2231, I understand, says an ordinance to amend Chapter 652, and that should say an ordinance to adopt Chapter 652, is that correct?
That is correct, Your Honor.
So that's the two items that I have, and if there's other items from council, seeing none, I guess a motion, or, yeah, a motion to amend.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Bynum.
I'd like to make a motion to...do we need to make a motion to move?
Yeah, just moving from the...
To move the commu...uh, item number 2223 from Communications to the Consent Agenda?
To Council Action.
Oh, I'm sorry, to Council Action, and to add, um, oh. And to add approval, subject to final, um, approval from...
Approval.
Subject to final approval. You got that, Michelle?
That's what it is.
Yeah, so we're gonna move, um, you're making a motion to move 2233 from the Consent Agenda to the last item under Council Action, and then to change the word amend to adopt for item 2231.
Yeah, that's it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Bynum, I need a second.
I'll second.
Support by Councilwoman Jermaine. Seeing no other items, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Fining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
Um, the next item are citizen comments not related to my agenda item.
Any comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item? Yes. Podium, please, name, address.
Janice Steinman, 502 East Fourth Street, Monroe. I worked the elections this last November, and I'd like to commend all of the city clerk, treasurer's staff, and, you know, all the help that we had at each of the precincts. It was a crazy time for us, but we all made it through. I would like to ask the council to, in their wisdom, hopefully, see fit to extend some additional funding to the clerk treasurer's office to allow us to have more than one electronic poll book at different precincts. I can only speak to mine. I know that it would have made all of the voters that attended my precinct much happier than having to wait in line, and, you know, in two years, we do have another presidential, and it will be that bad or worse. So, like I said, if you can see fit to add additional e-poll books, because currently we only have one per precinct.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think that, looking at the city manager here, I'm sure he'll make a note of that as we start into our, sort of, the future budget discussions regarding equipment. We'll go with the clerk treasurer, Lavoy. Maybe, I'm sure she'll have meetings with yourself and the other election volunteers and staff to kind of review a holistic of each of the precincts, and that way she can kind of give an assessment as well to come back to the council when we start having that monetary discussion. I don't know if there's any further you might need, Mr. Pastoo.
No, I think as part of the budget process, which surprisingly will be starting here within the next month, soon as we present the audit to the council, but for the fiscal year starting July 1st, you know, I think if the clerk treasurer incorporates something into the budget request, then either we, you know, give that consideration in the process.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, thank you. Appreciate it. Other comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item? Seeing none, clerk, next item, please.
Um, the next item would be Communications, item 2223, consideration to accept foreclosed delinquent parcels from the county treasurer.
Well, Mr. Pastoo, or the clerk treasurer has a comment to make on this?
Your Honor, we looked at the six parcels, there's really no action required on the part of the council unless there's some interest in rejecting specific parcels, but city staff recommends that we accept them. We looked at each and every one of them, didn't have any issue with accepting them from the treasurer.
Okay. So seeing no other comments, and action is not required under this, it's Communication, advising city of those parcels. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under Council Action, item 2231, Proposed Ordinance 18-006, An Ordinance to Adopt Chapter 652 Telecommunications Distributed Antenna System in Small Cell Networks.
Thank you. Mr. Pastoo, any other some information maybe you want to share with us, and as we start?
Thank you, Your Honor. We are asking city council to have a first reading, introduce an ordinance to adopt the Chapter 652 telecommunication, to establish franchise agreement for distributed antenna systems and small cell networks located within the city. The ordinance is to establish a framework for the issue to issue, for the city to issue franchise agreements for these small cell systems. I know this last year, we approved deployment of eight small cell antennas within the city itself, and while that process worked, I think our sense is it would be beneficial to, for all parties, to operate under a process with a more formal structure, but also too, as we know that Senate Bill 637 is working on, and if there is any kind of grandfathering provisions related to having a franchise structure, we would hopefully be under the wire for that, because I do think certainly local government input in that process is important in managing the public right of way.
Very good.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance number 18006, and schedule a public hearing and the second reading for December 3rd, 2018.
Second. Motion by Councilman Egwangeli, supported by Councilwoman Lamore, item 2231, Proposed Ordinance 18006, public hearing be set and second reading of the proposed ordinance. Clerk.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Fining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Ordinance 18-006, Chapter 652 Telecommunications Distributed Antenna Systems and Small Cell Networks, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 652, that should read adopt, correct?
Correct.
An Ordinance to Adopt Chapter 652 Telecommunications Distributed Antenna System in Small Cell Networks of the Code of the City of Monroe.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is item 2226, Traffic Study for Cass Harrison 7th and 8th Streets.
Mr. Pastoo.
Your Honor, we did talk a little bit about this during our work session, but we're recommending that council approve an evaluation of our traffic on the south end of town, and particularly looking at the impact with Cass Street at the, as it enters the Kroger Grocery Store. We had a conversation about a month ago with, our dialogue with Cass and Harrison, and the impact that that traffic has had on those neighborhoods when we were contemplating going to two-way traffic. This evaluation would be more comprehensive, because there has been some discussion at looking at converting 7th and 8th as well to two-way traffic, and closing potentially there at the south end of Cass. How does that traffic move, certainly from our end, that we anticipate that it'll move it out of the neighborhoods and more so into the, into north or south Monroe to, for people to access that Kroger Grocery Store, but the most prudent thing, I think, to do is to do the evaluation, see what the traffic counts look like, incorporate it into a modeling of that traffic flow so that we do have a better understanding of how that will happen as we contemplate converting 7th and 8th, as well as when we continue our further discussing at a later point, Cass and Harrison.
Comments from council, or action?
Your Honor, I'll move that we recommend the award of traffic study for Cass Harrison 7th and 8th, the OHM advisors, in the amount of $18,800, with a total budget of $21,600.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Egwangeli, supported by Councilwoman Whitman, item 2226, the traffic study for Cass Harrison 7th and 8th Streets. Just, I'll make just a quick comment, because I know that there's residents here, this is the start point of, really, when we talk about the downtown and the comprehensive plan there, there'd be further discussion regarding the one-way streets in the downtown, and all has to flow together. We started with the Cass and Harrison discussion, recognizing through conversations, those who were provided, as well as council and administration, you talk about 7th and 8th Street, and it really has to flow together. This study is, it's gonna give the data that everybody can hopefully see and understand as far as what the counts actually are. As many times I go down there, some days I see traffic, and other days I don't as much, and the one-ways are hard to discern, and knowing what the two-ways might do might give an indication of how the traffic's going to flow, as was included here, whether the closure at the end of Cass at Kroger's or not, all that can be at least configured. So, there's other comments from council, if not, Councilwoman Lamore?
Yes, Your Honor. The one thing that this, that I'm understanding from the study, that it's not going to bring to our knowledge, is how the alleyway is gonna impact that street, and that's, that's one thing that's kind of a negative to the study, is that we're not gonna find out that information, which I think is a very necessity of basically going from one to two-way streets in that area, or closing off that street.
I'll see if Mr. Pastoo has a comment, because that was discussed during the work session, and I also pointed out that northern alley that leads out to Monroe Street, though that will be accounted for, is my understanding of that part. Don't miss Pastoo, get anything further before we...
You know, given some additional consideration, it's unusual to contemplate maybe doing a count of an alley, and yet, given how it functions, it may be something that, with the contingency, we may add on there, because clearly for it to be functional, you'd have to close off Cass as well as the alleyway to that site to get the full value of what that impact would be, so.
So with the comment, at least it's known, as we speak with OHM and their, their work that they do, that they understand the impact that that might have as well. I'm sure they'll see that as they start.
Yeah, just one other question regarding that alleyway, is that in the city, or is that in the county, or township, I should say?
Well, the...
Most of it's in the city, I think.
Right, the north, north-south is in the city, the east-west is in the township, I believe. We'll make sure we clarify that, what that is. Really, when it comes out, the one that goes east, that comes out to Monroe Street, actually becomes an M dot discussion, because you're talking about a road going onto a state highway, trunk line, that, that would be the influence, I would say, on that, and thought about that is, people that are coming out that way, they're making a left-hand turn, it's so close to the traffic light, it actually crosses traffic, so I would hope that would be looked at as well, and I think, as the city manager said, recognizing the importance of including this past as the OHM advisors, looking at that component as well. They're good questions. Okay, okay. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Fining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is item 2228.
No comments? Wow.
It's the best, it's the best. It's the best.
That's it. No, that's not true. Well, you went on the next item, you didn't ask, you didn't ask for count, uh, public comments.
Well, the item was about the contract, not about what the outcome's going to be at the street.
Correct. We're not allowed to comment on that?
At the end.
Well, that'll be comment time at the end as well. Thank you. Clerk, next item, please.
Item 2228, Sublease Agreement with the River Rays and National Battlefield Park Foundation.
Mr. Pastoo.
Your Honor, we're asking city council to consider approval of a sublease agreement with the River Rays and National Park Battlefield Foundation. It would be a 30-year lease agreement with that. I think last month, we went through and reviewed the structure of the sublease with the city council. As I said, it is a 30-year lease, and this is kind of a triggering mechanism, if you will, for the Battlefield Foundation to be able to start taking advantage of the appropriations that they receive from the state for improvements related to that facility, as well as some other projects that would go along with that, complement and stuff.
Counsel, if not...
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve 30-year sublease agreement with the River Rays and National Battlefield Park for the former Monroe Multi-Sports Complex.
Second. Motion by Councilman Egwangeli, supported by Councilwoman Lamore, item 2228, Sublease Agreement with the River Rays National Battlefield Park Foundation. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Fining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is item 2227, Award of Bids, 2018 Building Demolition Program Phase 2.
Mr. Pastoo.
We're asking city council approval for, to accept the demolition bids for two projects. One is at 1257 East Elm, which is fairly straightforward demolition, the other is at 1030 East Second, which we refer to as the Purple Church. Both of these properties had, after completing the asbestos survey, had a significant amount of remediation, particularly the, the commercial property at 1030 East Second Street. We solicit bids for it, the free bids were received very close, which tells us that the bidders knew what they were bidding on, and so we're asking city council to approve an award, excuse me, the bid to the low bidder, in this case, which is Homridge Incorporated, the amount of $135,800, with an additional $10,000 contingency, and that, that be conditioned upon the final purchase of the property with the existing property owner before proceeding with that project.
Any questions for Mr. Pastoo? With that, motion be in order.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Lamore?
I recommend that we award the contract to Homridge Incorporated, the amount of $135,800 for the 2018 Building Demolition Program Phase 2, that an additional $10,000 in contingency be authorized, should the need arise, that the meron clerk treasurer be authorized to execute the contracts on behalf of the city of Monroe, and the finance director be authorized to make any necessary transfers contingent upon closing of purchase.
Of 1030 Second. And, because there's two parcels.
Good.
The one...
On 1030 Second, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine, item 2227, the demolition program phase 2, as stated. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Fining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item under Council Action is item 2233, Wastewater Treatment Plant, Fiscal Year 2018, 2019, Sledge Hauling and Disposal Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Pastoo.
Thank you. We're asking city council to approve, accept the bids received for sledge hauling services based on our discussion during the work session, and award to the low bid with waste management at their Woodland Facility, contingent upon a final review and approval of the agreement by the city attorney.
Comments from council? Know that we had a discussion at the work session on some details as well. There's no comments?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract for waste hauling, with the condition that the contracts, in addition to being authorized, in addition to authorizing all the necessary documents on behalf of the city, that they be subject to the city attorney approval.
Second. Motion by Councilman Egwangeli, supported by Councilman Felder, on item 2233, as stated. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Fining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is the Consent Agenda, and for item B, Approval of Payments to Vendors, the amount should read $955,590.09, 955-590.09.
Thank you. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda the council wishes to have pulled for further discussion?
Your Honor, I would like to have item 2232, pulled for further discussion.
Other items on the agenda, council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none? Any items on the Consent Agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items remaining on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, motions in order.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of those items that been pulled for further discussion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Egwangeli, supported by Councilman Lamore, items remaining on the Consent Agenda, be accepted as presented. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Fining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The next item is 2232, Consideration to Amend Downtown Development Authority Budget.
Councilman Felder.
I wanted to pull this item from the Consent Agenda, not because of my opposition to it, but because I didn't want to bury the good news in the Consent Agenda. I think too often, the tendency is to take every uncontroversial issue, put it in the Consent Agenda to save time, which is an admirable thing to do, but I just wanted to, where there exists good news in the city, that we, you know, draw some attention to that, because we all spend all of our time just on the controversial items, and it makes it seem like there's bad news all the time. I think it's wonderful what the DDA is doing, I think it's certainly laudable what the private investors are doing, and I think that it's worthy of note, that part of the recovery of downtown Monroe is gonna happen because of private investment, and that these grants are bringing in a million dollars of rehabilitation to these properties, and I just think that that's a wonderful thing, and I, I wanted to notice them, I wanted to notice the DDA for bringing it to our attention, and I wanted to, to laud the property owners for taking the action that they did, so, that's all I have, Your Honor.
And see if there's other comments, Councilwoman Lamore?
Yes, Your Honor. I as well think that they are taking good action by helping these property owners and getting their properties rehabilitated, however, I just want to make sure that they keep their accounting proper in the future, make sure they take account of the extra $10,000 that they're spending this year, make sure that they account for that the following years, and make sure that it's something that they don't take lightly, the DDA, that is.
I'll just make a quick comment, because I know that the council's been involved with the, the DDA, our goals and objectives, and really bring some changes about, and we had that in the work session as well today, talking about really what the DDA is, and I think continued working together between the council and the DDA, it is critically important, as Councilman Felder said, and, you know, some revitalization opportunities. This presented as an opportunity, and the committee knew what the amount was that was budgeted, but as it turned out, there were four projects submitted, two easily didn't meet the level of expectation when you talk about development. The other two did, and because they are significant properties that are in significant disrepair, while they are capitalized to carry about the project, I think approving this gives the opportunity to understand the partnership that falls between the DDA and the, those that are, as Councilman Felder said, willing to put, you know, investments of a half million plus in each building, is significant. And yet, they also, in that discussion with the DDA board, it was understood that, they first looked at their existing budget, could they absorb that within, and as they worked through it, they realized some other objective that's on the goals and objectives, some other project would have had to have been kind of slowed or shelved, but that would have been a difference from what, you know, the council's looking at, as well as the DDA. So, while it is coming out of the contingent, the question was obviously raised of making sure that's accounted for, as Councilman Lamore said, as they progress with the years to come. I think from the time with some of their debt obligations, this amount is small amount that's able to be accounted for over the years as those debt obligations come along, to see a significant transformation on the building, and they do have the money to do it, so, I just want to kind of get that review and the discussion, if there's other comments.
Yeah, Your Honor, I think their, last time I looked at the audit, they're sitting on, what, they have like a $400,000 fund balance?
Yeah.
For projects, and the two projects that are identified here, 34 West Front Street is the former U&amp;I Bar that's being converted into a distillery, and apartments, and 13 West Front Street, I've only heard, haven't seen anything specific, but that's gonna be a major renovation, and that's been an eyesore on the west side of Monroe Street for a long time. So, the other important thing that this does is, the amount of expenditure that both these property owners are making will go towards a, obviously increase the tax increment financing for the district, but on the other hand, too, it also opens the city up to additional downtown development liquor licenses, because those are based on reinvestment, and, you know, the more restaurants we have, the more eating and drinking establishments we have in the downtown, the more people that'll come downtown, and increases its vibrancy. So, this has a couple of, this $10,000 infusion into these projects leverages a whole lot for the downtown development authority and the community in the future.
I'll just add, as those are improved, of course, the value of the properties improve, which of course increases the tax and financing, the opportunity to re-approach what some of that, what that is. Just on the one property, which is 13 West Front Street, is actually the official address, but most people know that it faces Monroe Street, which is the Monroe Optical Building, and that's also gonna include loft apartments as well. They have a really good plan, I think that they're moving forward quickly, I appreciate their partnership with, and the city staff assisting as you move along, and the DDA for the recommendation. So, what's there's other comments, Councilwoman Jermaine?
Just to piggyback on what you're saying, is it's going to seed more growth in downtown Monroe, which will be good for everyone, citizens, businesses, the city as well, so it's very good news.
Not only are they capitalized to be able to carry it out, but they also have a plan of what it is they're going to be placing in those two facilities. So with that, clerk, please call the roll.
Do I, I think I have a motion.
Oh, I thought we had a motion, I'm sorry. We need a motion before we take a roll. Councilman Felder?
Your Honor, I motion that we accept item number 2232, Consideration to Amend Downtown Development Authority Budget by $10,000.
Second. Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Lamore, on item 2232, Consideration to Amend the Downtown Development Authority Budget by $10,000. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Fining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
So, we'll start with council comments, Councilwoman Lamore?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to iterate to the citizens in the crowd right now, we understand your concern in regards to the operation of the traffic flow, but I want you to understand that, from my understanding of this study that we're, that we passed this evening... this evening, we're trying to determine what the flows are, and also, we're asking the people that are doing the study, OHM, to answer a few more questions in regards to how that alleyway is going to impact the study flow, the study, the flow of the traffic in the Cass Street, as well as if we were to close off Cass at the Kroger parking lot there. So, I think this study will be a good thing in terms of getting more answers, hopefully answering some of your questions, as well as ours, to determine whether it's a good thing or a bad thing to continue on with what we're trying to do here. So, it's not an action of attempting to supersede what you guys want to happen there. We're just trying to get answers for you and us as well. So, that's pretty much the idea behind this study that we're doing. It's a relatively small cost of a study, but we do, you know, think very highly of what you have to say, and appreciate any comments you have to bring to us yet tonight. That's it.
Excuse me, Councilman Felder?
Yeah, just, I attended the tree lighting with my family, as did about a thousand other residents, so that was, that was a wonderful turnout downtown, and just a wonderful event. I hope that in the future, our businesses continue to try and take advantage of those opportunities for when residents are downtown, you know, in the commercial activity that they bring with them. Also, the Sawyer House held the 100th anniversary of the armistice of World War I, which then became Veterans Day, and of course, we had Veterans Day concert later that same day, and that was, that was a treat as well, put on by our, put on for free by our Monroe County Community College college band, who is rehearsing tonight. So, that and I bought a house. So, that's, that's been an exciting journey for me. I'm now on the other side of the 6th precinct in Cranbrook Estates, so, you know, I was in Riverside Manor for about 26 years, so we'll feel how it feels from the other side of the 6th.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Whitman?
I have no comments.
Councilman Eichelangeli?
Thanks, your honor. I just have one question, actually, for Mr. Cochran, or for Mr. Pastu. We made in the accounts payable, we had our quarterly payment to ALCC, and those payments are part of a contract, and that contract has certain metrics relative to their performance, so I have a question, how are they doing?
There's a couple areas of concern. One of them, I actually talked with Amarty Freeland today. They are asking some assistance on one of the items, in particular, the three-year forecast and how to help with that. So, they did meet with, they had two sessions with Board Workshop, going through the training and program of how, you know, boards, nonprofit boards function and operate, which I thought was a critical first step. So, I'll have probably more to report as we get moving along, but I know there's been a couple of small items that they've been working on, so I'll get a sense probably tomorrow at 1 o'clock how we were at with that.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have, your honor.
Councilwoman Finney?
No comment, your honor.
Councilwoman Germaine?
Gosh, that was fast. I want to thank Loretta LaPointe and the Parks and Recreation Department, so, for putting those beautiful lights at Veterans Park. If you haven't seen it, go by there, and it's absolutely beautiful. You can see the dam, and you can do this little walkway. And I'd like to also wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and enjoy your families.
Very good. I have a couple of comments first. I want to do a bit of a review. I appreciate the council members already making a couple, so I won't repeat those. I do want to commend the Historic District Commission and the city staff for putting the presentation on here this past week on historic homes and ways to research your historic home, ways to learn about the historic homes that we have in our community. It was well-attended, and I appreciate the fact they're putting these programs together for the residents to attend. Actually, I had people from outside the community as well as that came in. The following, the, some of the activities in the past week, the RRCA had a Rural Veterans Day, had a great presentation, which was called Beyond Glory, with the actor Stephen Langkew, did a one-person show, and it's just, I make the comment because there's a bunch that goes on at the Riverais and Center for the Arts that I think sometimes the community just is right in front of us and may not see. Not that you're going to attend all of them, but there's a long menu, or items to attend there. So, upcoming activities, I'll just start there. As was mentioned, the tree lighting last, last week, last weekend, but the activities upcoming on November 24th, the Downtown Monroe Business Network has Small Business Saturday, and besides being open for sales and opportunity for residents to visit and make purchases and see what's there, I know there's other activities that'll be going on as well. So, I'm going to continue on with the RRCA, because it's a time of year where they have one of their programs, the Nutcracker, which is over a three-day, November 30th, December 1st and 2nd. They have both got it going, just out of curiosity, and not that they're sold out yet, but they do sell quickly. That's why I wanted to bring it up now, because we won't be meeting again before that occurs, and opportunities for others to participate in taking a show and see the talent that our youth has in this community. December 15th, while it's a ways away, we will meet again before that. Just to remind people that the Downtown Monroe Night Parade, which is the Christmas Magic of Monroe that the Monroe News puts on, has a main sponsor and has others, many other sponsors, which I'll get into at a later meeting, opportunities for that event, and there'll be much activity, it says, long been, not only posted through the Monroe News, but other news and radio opportunities to learn about that, and hopefully people come downtown for that as well. One last item, as the Tourism Bureau continues on, and while they may be through some transition, they still have some partnerships with the Piper Holiday Music Festival, through the Tourism Convention Tourism Bureau, and there's three dates that are coming up in the future. It's kind of a carry-on from the Jazz series over the past summer, but those dates are December 1st, December 8th, and December 15th, at four locations or restaurants, where there'll be, again, free music, opportunities to dine and see others, but also to listen to music. Amaya's, McGate's, 129 Lounge, and Public House all be hosting music on those dates. Those are my comments for this evening. Or Trish LeBoy?
I've been thinking about my comments and trying to edit them in my head.
Okay.
I'll go as quickly as I can. First, I did want to thank everyone for their assistance on Election Day. The midterm election behaved very much like a presidential election, and while we were prepared, there were some unique circumstances that arose, and I was able to deploy additional staff, thanks to the cooperation of the city staff, to different precincts, and for additional help in my office. And so, I just, it was one of those moments where city staff really pulled together, not just on Election Day, but in the setup. The DPS department was wonderful with setup. They were great on Election Day, and then they were, they were finding shortcuts themselves on our teardown process. So, very, very pleased that we were all able to work together in the true spirit of camaraderie, and I appreciate that very much. I am very grateful that Janice Steinman came this evening to bring the poll books, the dual poll book potential as an option. That, when I got, when I took office in 14, the elections were entering a real transitional period, and they continue to become more complex, and they continue to become more sophisticated in terms of technology. And so, the poll book, the dual poll book was being piloted when I first got here, and now it is available for use in more than just those pilot cities. But it's, in my opinion, while it will be beneficial in some of our precincts, it's also part of a broader discussion. We have to have the capacity in terms of election inspectors to manage the technology that we bring, and we've been working on that. We've had more trainings. We're helping the election inspectors that we have had for years make the transition to a more technological type election while recruiting, while recruiting new ones. Janice is one of our great trainers. She helps make sure that folks have real-world experience under, under guidance of experienced election inspectors. So, there's a whole conversation. There's, there's all kinds of additional technology. The other piece of it is, is to move people through the election precincts faster. We also have to look at where one of the greatest bottlenecks is at this point, and that's with our new tech tabulators. On average, it's about 16 seconds for it to process one voter, and on the surface, that doesn't, so you get four voters a minute it can process. But that doesn't count the transition time between voters. It doesn't count what happens when there's a problem with a vote, and these machines have a few bugs, and every once in a while, they, they don't process the ballots at all, and we have to feed them in several times. And I don't know if it's part of the, if it's the printing of the ballots, or if it's the machine itself. There's, we're still troubleshooting with the vendor on those things. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is I think that, I'm glad we are starting this conversation now, and thank you again, Janice, for helping to start it, because there are multiple points along the way that we can, we can employ solutions to hopefully speed things up, and the state's taking it very seriously. They have a line study program that they've employed now at two elections, where they're simply asking election inspectors to count how many people are in line at the top of every hour. So, just know that this is a struggle, not just in the city of Monroe, but across the county and across the state and nationwide. And we also don't know what the impact of the latest proposal that was passed, what impact that will have. It will open up absentee voting to more and more people. So, will they take advantage of it? I don't know. All this is to say that for a city our size, we need to make sure we right-size in terms of technology that we, that we purchase for the elections, and I look forward to having those discussions with the city manager, finance director, and then ultimately, the election commission and council. So, I have been thinking about it a little bit.
That sure sounds like it. Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
I have one item. This will be our last meeting here with the county commission chambers. Greatly appreciate their graciousness in allowing us to be here for the last several months. I think as, going through the project a little bit today, and we're, we're near the end, there's still some finished details that need to take place, but we will be back in the regular city council chambers on December 3rd, so, happy to say that.
Thank you. Commissioners present here this evening. I know there's some residents that wish to speak. Name, address, please.
Ralph Woodbury, Nine Long Court. Two things. Number one, several times have been brought up, the alleyway. Which alleyway is being discussed when you say the alleyway?
I think, I can't speak for Councilman Lamore, but I think in the discussion we had, I'm looking at events, I would say, the alleyway that's between Cass and Monroe Street that runs north and south?
Between 8th and Kroger.
Yes, between 8th and Quarter, where, yeah.
Okay, that's what I figured, I wanted to make sure.
And then there's other, it's really, is it a street, is it an alley, it's paved, it goes east and west and comes out to Monroe Street? Well, I believe that's in the township, because it's on the other side of that.
I don't even think that's an alleyway. I think that's a private drive.
Private drive.
To that residence, so that's what I grew up, your understanding.
And the concern there is that, you know, traffic is finding its way down that way out as well, and going out to Monroe, and how, if we're looking at this, where do people drive and when are they leaving? If you change this, where would they go? If you leave that as an avenue, then they're going to be there, and if people are going to go out there and make left-hand turns, at least my thought is what I've seen. And so, we want to make sure that's included in that discussion. But that's the alleyway that seems to be traversed by not going down the street of in and out of Kroger.
Which gets me to my second one.
Go ahead.
Number 2226, Traffic Control Study. I understand that that was a contract with OHM, but I thought we had the opportunity to speak at that time. If I was wrong, I apologize. My question is, where is OHM Advisors at?
Good question. I think Mr. Pastu will probably have a better answer than I would, because they know that.
They're based out of Livonia. Ironically, their traffic engineer that we work with lives here in Monroe.
Okay. Is there nobody in Monroe that's qualified to do this study, that knows the ins and outs of these little alleyways and everything, that can do it cheaper or keep the money local? Did anybody?
Right, me too.
Yeah, please do. That's a good question, Ralph.
No, it's, you know, in this case, they've done some work with us in the past, but I will tell you, we did another project with the Maniket Smith Group, using their traffic engineer for, for a project. Candidly, over the years, this looks like a dollar amount that's appropriate, but.
I just said, if we could keep it local, I didn't know where this OHM was, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, they're out of Livonia, but their traffic engineer actually lives here in Monroe.
Okay, because I was just wondering, I was just wondering if they might have considered it being skewed, if you use somebody local that knows the ins and outs, wouldn't it be proper? You understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
I don't fault, because I think it's a good question to ask, is, you know, OHM, if you don't know the company, but they have done work in the city previously as well. In fact, they were a large part of the discussion when we talked about the, we came up with the work session as well, I-75, and discussions of the exit ramps. So, they're, they've been, they've done work here before.
Okay.
A well-known area.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Next, please.
favoring 711 Cass Street? I'm new to Monroe, and it's a wonderful city, but, I mean, that being said, that I thought that we had already, I mean, we had, the work session that we attended last, last month, we have, we have done a survey of, you know, we surveyed a little bit over 50%, and only one family on Cass Street said that they would, they would want a two-way street. You had a recommendation for Mr. Pastu?
Pastu? Yeah.
For, to make it two-way from 4th Street on, where the city, the street widens out. Now, when we, when the mayor said that we want to continue this, nobody on city council had said a word, except for, unfortunately, the person that represents our district. But you do not represent the views of your constituents, and I think that's unfortunate. That's pretty much what I have to say. I think that, I think that $18,000 is a complete waste of money. I don't think that Seventh and Eighth, and Cass, and Harrison have anything to do with the downtown that far down. And there's people that stop, this is Dan Reifler, and myself, in restaurants, in Kroger, and thank us for actually speaking out. I know there's a lot of people that don't take the time to come to these city council meetings, but there's a lot of people that do watch on YouTube, and they know what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Gunter, and I live at 721 Cass Street. In regards to the $18,000-plus traffic study, I would like to propose that there be a work session between council and the interested parties. But it was already voted on. Again, no matter what a study would reveal, parking would be a real problem. Even though some homeowners have access to the alley, as I do, I feel parking in the alley is unsafe. My garage has been broken into, fence panels have been removed, so that they have access to my yard. On a, in the summer, there's a lot more foot traffic through the alley. I think that the study done in, probably in December, they're just getting a snapshot. They don't know what's going on. I think that they won't talk, I don't know if they'll talk to the individuals about how they feel about it, but our home values, I feel, will go down also, because who wants to buy a house where there's no trap, no parking? So, again, I think a work session with the interested parties would have been good before you spend $18,000, because even though you think that $18,000 is not much money for this, I think $18,000 is still a lot of money. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Address?
Hi, Tammy Van Reiver, 711 Cass Street. I have been doing a little bit of this study myself. I have videotaped. A police officer had somebody stopped one day, a drunk driver, which he had to pull her over right then, and the children on the bus behind the police officer were left behind there at least 35 minutes. So, that leaves parents wondering where their children are, and they're not getting off the bus. That street is not wide enough there to have two, to have two-way traffic. There's going to be a big issue. Another time, a city truck came by to plant a tree in my neighbor's yard, held up traffic for at least 40 minutes. And the city bus comes by there every hour, like I mentioned. The Lake Erie Transit stops every hour on that corner. That's a huge bus. How are you going to have two-way traffic down on that little narrow park? I don't get it. And Mr. Eichelangeli, I'm really disappointed that you did not come out and talk to us and go door-to-door like I asked you to. I did that. Those are your voters. Those are the people's opinions that you need to be listening to. Thank you.
If you, there's a follow-up question?
I have the video if you need it.
No, I just want to know which corner you said at the corner. I want to clarify.
The corner is.
I think your transit stop.
Is 8th and Cass, 8th and Cass.
Okay.
Every hour it stops there and people get off to go to different areas. So.
I want to make sure I got the right corner.
Yeah, it's that corner, but, I mean, I did save the video, I, just to show you actually how long and the backup that there was, just to, some proof for that. So.
Don't dispose.
What?
Don't dispose of it.
Okay, I do have it. Thank you.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Seeing no further comments. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder to adjourn. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilperson Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Echolangely?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?